So, we will go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. I had not heard till this afternoon, but congratulations to Dr. Jarrah.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, he's somewhere listening, but what a coup.
Jarrah, he's not down here yet. Oh, he's still here?
He's busy.
Yeah, well, that's wonderful.
He's not free yet.
When did it happen? I just saw today.
Yesterday.
Okay, that's terrific.
You saw it on CNN?
No, actually, I only know because I had a couple reporters call me from Nevada. I'm like, well, I guess you got it.
Back to the club.
Yeah.
Well, back to the club.
Yeah, well, good. I don't feel so bad for not calling them back yet. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. We are ready to begin, first with our budget update, an opportunity for the school board to talk around budget priorities. Most importantly, for our CFO to give us an update, and then followed by Associate General Counsel Aline Fernandez, who will give us our legislative update. Let's go ahead and start, and Chairman, I would recommend that we break between the two for any questions that the board might have, and then Ms. Fernandez will go on with the legislative update, which is quite extensive. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Superintendent, Chairman, Board members. All right, I'm just going to go over a little budgetary landscape for you that came out of the legislative session. For the upcoming year, our projected FTE is 209,000. That's an increase of 4,241 students for this coming year. Overall, our increase in the dollars coming out of the FEFP is 54.7 million, but of that, 30.6 of that is used just to fund that growth of 4,241 students. In addition, we have 6.2 million that came in the form of an additional categorical, and that is strictly to be used for additional SROs beyond our current SROs that we have in place this fiscal year. In addition, there is a brand-new categorical added for 4.7 million for mental health, and that, again, is also for additional mental health services beyond what we currently have in the district. There were 762,000. That was an increase in the categorical for teacher classroom supplies, and that was provided to give an estimated $50 increase over the current year amount that goes directly to the teachers' for classroom supplies. In addition, there was a FRS rate increase this year that will cost the district about 3.5 million additional dollars. You've heard about it before, but it is the 47 cents. That is our base student allocation increase for this coming year that we use to, that those dollars are the most flexible that we often use to handle any inflationary cost increases such as salaries, benefits, et cetera. The FEFP per-student funding is approximately $7,342 for the coming year, and that is an increase of $111 per student, or 1.53 percent over the second FEFP calculation, and that includes those categoricals such as the Safe School Increase, the Mental Health, and the Teacher Classroom Supply I just noted. If you back out those categoricals, then that per-student increase is $54, or .75 percent. If you add on top of that the special millage we have in this district, that brings you up to $78, or just under 1 percent on a per-student basis increase. Speaking of the special millage, we are in the final year of that four-year renewal period, and you've already put it on the ballot for the August 28th for that renewal, but for this coming year, that special millage will generate approximately 136 million, or $654 per student, and that equates to just under 8 percent of our operating revenue for the general fund. The purpose of that special millage, again, is to preserve academic programs, retain highly qualified teachers, and protect arts, athletics, and student activities. As far as potential sources for raises, we have the limited-per-student increases that I just went over, and then we are anticipating, we're realizing, a savings in our utility costs due to more efficient, more efficiency as we renovate the older schools and put in more efficient units. Also, there's been an increase in the interest rates over the past number of months, so we're anticipating an increase in interest income for the coming year, and we're continuing trying to maximize our Medicaid reimbursements, so we were expecting an increase in the Medicaid reimbursements over last year's budget. Some capital considerations. First of all, safety improvements. Senate Bill 7026 appropriated just under 99 million in non-recurring funds through the Department of Education for all schools in the state, and these are for grants for improving the physical security of school buildings. Districts, including ours, must complete a risk assessment by August 1st of this year, and then DOE will put out the grant guidelines by August 31st, and districts will have their application submission done by December 1st, and the grants are expected to be awarded by the middle of January. So, safety improvements, along with the potential salary increases, will be further discussed in more detail in executive session. As far as sunshades go, it's $40,000 is the average cost per elementary school to add the sunshade. Currently, we have 113 elementary schools without any sunshades, so to add one would cost an estimated 4.5 million for the district. Ornamental fencing, our current standard, you know, is the black vinyl chain-link fence, which costs about $20 per linear foot. The ornamental fencing, using a reinforced steel as is necessary for safety concerns, costs about $120 per linear foot, so that's six times as much.
And Dale, if you'll just, Mr. Kelly, if you'll just pause there for a second. You might recall previously that ornamental fencing was about double the cost, or a 5% up mark. The problem is, we have learned from the ornamental fencing in certain areas that students simply bend the bars to get through them, and so we have replaced those bent rods in several instances. And so, it would be the recommendation from facilities that you go with a stronger grade of steel. Those are aluminum. We need something stronger that students or unwanted visitors cannot bend, hence the additional cost. I wanted to clarify that for you.
All right, really, with that, that ends my presentation on the budget landscape for the district.
All right, Ms. Cadel.
Other than making sure that we are paying our teachers and our support staff, and that we try to figure out a way to find something for an increase for them, I really don't have budget priorities other than taking care of our employees. The one thing I do have a question on, and this might not be the place, and maybe it comes later, but Dale, when you referred to the things we have to do for safety, Superintendent, I'm wondering when we'll get an update on where are we at having the safety persons at every school's identified, and, you know, that whole litany of things that have to happen on the timetable. We haven't really talked about it, and tonight might not be the time to talk about it, but I think, you know, as you listen to the news more, I'd like to kind of know, are we on target? Do we think we're going to meet it? Do we already have the safety plans? And just that kind of stuff.
Certainly, Ms. Cadel, members of the board, we will actually be updating you in an executive session. We've had consultants here in the district, in fact, and some conference calls with Roberto Pacheco and team around recommendations, and so we'll be able to update you in an executive session in the next couple of weeks. I will tell you, because it's been publicly noted, that law enforcement agencies have already said there is no way they would be able to provide one resource officer for every school. They don't have that capacity. It would take about 18 months lead up to get enough trained, and so they're looking at some means of trying to meet the letter of the law, if not the intent, for having coverage in all of our schools at as low a ratio as possible. But that's been publicly stated, that they don't have the bodies. It's not a matter of the resources that the state has provided, although if you went for one actual body in every school, that money comes a bit short, but our local law enforcement agencies have said it's a matter of actually having the capacity to provide that. But we'll be bringing a more detailed update of that and other issues around safety as our consultants are concluding their work here. We'll have that executive session scheduled.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Couple of questions, and I feel like I totally forgot everything I once knew about budgeting, Mr. Kelly. Probably forgot a long time ago. So, help me understand the juxtaposition between our FEFP funding increased by 54 million, which I get that, and how it's allocated there, and I guess my question is this. The base student allocation and the FEFP funding in general, does that take into account the 4,241 projected student increase for us? It does, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if it does, and if our per-student increase is $54 excluding categoricals per student, because our funding is on a per-student basis, so if it's $54 per student excluding categoricals, how do we get from there to 47 cents per student?
The $54 excludes those specific categoricals I spoke of. The base student allocation is one part of the formula. Then you have a myriad of other categoricals, including class size. There's a lot of, you know, SAI, SRI dollars, supplemental reading instruction. So, there's other categoricals. I was just pointing out the additional categorical dollars that were added in this year's budget that were, had strings tied to them you can't use for any other purpose. So, we still get class-sized dollars that are coming to us to fund our students, et cetera. So, there are other dollars, and then there was a new categorical, which I didn't mention because it's flexible. There's a compression adjustment. We received $4 million for in this coming year's budget. Those dollars are flexible, but they are beyond the base student allocation.
And that's a compression adjustment, you said?
Yes, that was a brand-new, and they added this year. It was predominantly to help your smaller districts. It was based on the districts throughout the state that were earning below the average per FTE, based on last year's budget.
Do they not do sparsity anymore?
They still do sparsity.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, then, when we look at that third slide, you know, I do understand what categoricals are. I mean, we had a per-student increase of $111, including categoricals, so that per-student increase of $54 is really not excluding all categoricals.
Not all categoricals. It was specifically those three that I mentioned, which was the Safe School.
New categorical.
Increase, yes, the Mental Health, and the Teacher Classroom Supply. Those three increases were the ones I excluded from that.
Okay. Yeah, I think we need to clarify that, because, you know, frankly, we're saying 47 cents out there, and that looks, even to me, you know, somewhat experienced with the budget, that looks like it's actually $54 per student. So, I'll let you figure out how to rephrase that before we do a public presentation on this, but maybe excluding those three categoricals. But you're still saying we only have 47 cents per student when you exclude all categoricals?
If you exclude all categoricals, correct. There is that base student allocation that went up only 47 cents per student.
Okay. All right, well, just so I don't have to go twice, and I have two minutes left, my three priorities are the sunshades. You know, I really think it's important we find money to do that in our budget. What was that cost, again?
4.5 million.
Okay. You know, my priority continues to be the decorative metal fencing, but I want to clarify, you know, and I think everybody on the board knows this, and I know Mr. Morris knows this, I by no means at all am suggesting we do decorative metal fencing for all of our fencing. You know, on any given school, my gut tells me the portion along the major thoroughfares ranges from anywhere from 10 percent of the total fencing to maybe 25 percent at most, and that's all I'm proposing. So, just take one school as a, throw it out there example. Lake Como K8. When I look at the total fencing on that project, and I'm just making this up out of thin air, but I bet I'm pretty close to right, the portion that I funded out of my member funds to do decorative metal fencing, I would venture, I guess, is no more than 15 to 20 percent of the total fencing on that project, because the other 80 to 85 percent of that fencing is around the back property lines that front other neighborhoods. I don't have any desire to do decorative metal fencing there. That's not entirely true, and when we look at a school like Hillcrest, where I'm also using my member funds to provide decorative metal fencing there, there, to be candid with you, it's probably more like 80, 85 percent, but I think it's unique because it's an urban island, you know, and it's right there, and it's fronted by four neighborhood roads. But, you know, I can think of another school where I recently went to the dedication where no more than 10 percent of the fencing, I believe, would have been on a roadway. So, you know, for me, I just, you know, wish we could figure out a way to do it along our major thoroughfares. You know, as I've pointed out before, I think schools that are within the city limits very often, if they're in a city, whether it's City of Orlando, City of Winter Park, those city councils are stepping up and funding a more attractive frontage for those schools, but I think in the unincorporated areas, that's simply not happening. And the last one is just something I throw out all the time, only because it comes up every time I give a stump speech, and I'm asked on the stump about teacher pay. I, you know, I just, I wish we would look under our range system and us bring to the table a way to pay mid-range teachers, i.e. those with more than 12 to 15 years' experience, a dramatically higher salary. You know, I've always said, it came up again with leadership boards the other day, that I personally don't have as much issue with what we start teachers at. That's been a common theme of mine for eight years, but, you know, the teacher who's been out working with us for 15 years, and has two kids, and maybe a single dad or a single mom, and, you know, the fact that they're making in the low 50s still after 15 years, I just feel like we really should take a look at that if we could somehow, and bring a proposal to the table. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the board, I want to thank you for supporting me when my constituents spoke last week regarding sunshades. I got an email saying that you had relayed that I had brought their concerns to the table, so I want to thank you for that. It's nice to get that email. Salaries, yes, you know, certainly agree. Mental health, yes, and the reason, I know we have the categorical for the mental health, but even before we got it, and even before, you know, Parkland, I know, I'd heard from several principals that many of their students were having anxiety attacks, and it wasn't necessarily because of testing or because of, you know, too much homework. It was things that were going on in their life, and, I mean, this was at three different schools that told me about that. So, I hope we can look at that mental health for not just personnel, but for training, and for possibly studying about how you help kids avoid that anxiety. So, I'm glad that the state gave us more, but even before that, I was going to ask for us to consider it. Sunshades, wanted to ask a question. 40K seems high on average, and I just wanted to ask because I think most of the B-14s that are coming in, aren't they around the 28, 30 range? Or is that just cushioning, retrofitting a school or a play area? I know some schools want much more than what I feel is feasible or justifiable, so I just wanted to ask how that came back, and also in regard to the 4.5 for across the district. How many schools, you mentioned a number, and I'm so sorry, it just, it went by, that you said still needed them?
113.
113, okay. And so, that would be how much it would cost to retrofit schools? Have we looked at a cost of if we put them into the design for our newer schools?
I would have to defer to facilities on that, what the difference would be, but yes, we can do that. We can look at that.
Because that would be an additional cost to our design. And in regard, real quick, to Mr. Subblutt's comment about the 47 cents, I was wondering about that, too, but I wrote down here that the 47 cents is usually the most flexible of the money to use for salaries, and what else? Did you mention another item?
Salaries or any other inflationary-type cost, the benefits that go up, et cetera. Yes.
Okay, so that, I liked how you used that flexible characterization, because I think that's what we need. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Colbert?
Really difficult to have a budget conversation when you have no money. It's like planning a vacation without any money, but, so all of the really visionary things that I think all of us board members have, we have to lay those aside and just talk about the things that we can do. For me, salaries continue to be the top priority. They have to be. Our people are our single biggest, most important asset, and so wherever we can find that money for salaries, I like that you've listed some potential sources through savings, but I just think we need to turn over every rock and empty every pocket we can to provide increases for our teachers and our employees. So, and we'll continue to look to the state for that. There's a little lawsuit going to the Supreme Court that might be helpful. In addition to that, I concur with the decorative fencing, I think, just especially on the front, on the front of schools, and I, some of our new school designs don't even require fencing on the front of the school. The way they're built with that single point of entry, that they are, they have cameras and swipe entries, and what, you don't even need fencing across the front, but where we don't have that design, just the front, I think it says a lot aesthetically for the front of the school, but I think there's a psychological impact in the way it looks, particularly on the front. And the sunshades, I think that that actually goes to the safety of our students. When I, when I just simply think about, would I go outside for 45 minutes in the hot sun with no protection? We don't sunscreen our children before we send them to school, so we won't be buying sunscreen because we have no money. So, I think that that's a safety concern, and that is one of the reasons that we need to look at that. I also agree, I'm very happy with the additional funding from the state for mental health. I think that we've had some concerns over discipline in our schools, and having those additional mental health providers and counselors will help us with some of that, and then that in turn will help our teachers with classroom management, and our students will excel academically. So, I think that's an investment in student success to make that a priority. And the last thing I just want to share with everyone, I've touched just briefly with the superintendent and with Mike Armbruster on this idea. This is something that wouldn't necessarily cost us any money, but where we could partner with the county. I'm modeling this after something that they do in Miami Dade, and it is a program to bring thousands of internships and apprenticeships in the summer for our students. They receive, in Miami Dade, they receive $1.5 million from the county and from their children's trust and career source, and they use that money to provide paid internships for our students. Mostly, they start with high school seniors, but they do go down to juniors. Last year, they placed 3,000 students into these internships, and as we continue to want to provide more industry certifications and more career paths for our students, I just think this would be a great idea. So, I won't belabor it. I gave you some information on that, and I think that that's something that, along with partners, would be a great return on investment, especially if we targeted certain industries. I think that the business community would be willing to step up there. So, it's something I wanted to share with you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just ask Ms. Colbert a question? Do you want us to talk about this at a later date? I mean, it's not, is it anything that you're asking out of this budget? This was just FYI?
No, something I want to share with you, that we need to do that publicly, yeah.
Oh, okay, all righty, because I know that working with businesses, that we probably can do this. Okay, but it wasn't anything you're asking to come out of this budget for Dr. Jenkins to look at?
I just want to make you aware of it as something that I'd like us to take a look at.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chair, I shouldn't have used my minutes for that, me in my mouth. Okay, the safety improvements, I really enjoyed. Thank you so very much. Sunshades, let me ask you very quickly, just make notes, just make my notes, and come back and ask. On the sunshades, are you telling me that it's going to cost the millions, what was it, 3 million?
4.5 million.
Oh, 1.5 million?
4.5 for the 113.
Yeah, 4.5, yeah, I was saying 3, but 4.5. Are we not temporarily looking at what we did at Millennium? I mean, I know you're going big dog. Have any, you all were supposed to bring me a cost back, because that would be some type of shade before Ms. Flynn get off of this board. We're not looking for Mont Blanc, but I know that they were expensive, but remember, we did not pay for that. The one that I told you about 50 times, it's on I-4. You can look over at Millennium. We have not had any complaints, not one of my parents have said that child have gotten sunburned, so why have we not looked into that company, which, you know, I don't even know who they are. I do know at the time they did it, but something temporary, doesn't have to even be that company. It could be a company that makes Simula, but I think Mr. Morris can speak to it to see if it has really done the job that it was supposed to do. So, this would be a question for Dr. Jenkins. I know that's not going to cost 4.5 million dollars. So, I don't know, what are we looking at? Metal, putting them under, the metal, come back and answer that for me, please, okay? The ornamental fencing, whatever the chairman wants, let the chairman have something. I'm going to be nice to the chairman, because one day he may consider the governorship, and it could take me with him. And, oh, God, he'll probably die. Whatever the chairman wants, I mean, the ornamental fencing, it does look great. So, if everybody got their thing, we all have our special thing, he hardly ever, excuse me, he hardly ever asked anything. The biggest thing was that he loves those children, the scholarship. I think that's one of the finest thing that we have done for Orange County Public School under his leadership, and I do feel, Dr. Jenkins, that, you know, even with the other things that you have done under your leadership, that, look at the philanthropy, so all the money you brought in, some kind of way, we have got to work it out, that we can get some, you know, decent fencing, but you all know, I think maybe Ms. Colbert is mentioning, even if it's the front, or either, we want to be fair, but, you know, see what we could do and bring it back to the board so we could decide, but let him go away happy. Don't let him go away sad, all right? Okay. Okay, now, the next thing I wanted to ask was the, thank you, with the increase in the Medicaid, the reimbursement, just tell me what that's going to do for us. Not right, just come back to me, and I'm going to finish real quick. How many more minutes I got? About two? Ooh, wonderful. Okay, now, the special millage that's going to generate the 136 million, $654 per pupil, pure pupil, right? What about the incoming students? That's coming, you can give me that, because they're going to come, and I wanted to ask, Dr. Jenkins, we had asked the state to please keep track of the students that are coming in, be it Puerto Rico, or be it wherever, that we are able, they may come in from South Carolina, okay? So, whatever state or country they come from, how are we going to get the state? I know they're not going to help us if they don't get there on FTE. So, you know, I want to see the special cases, how are we going to handle those challenges that the districts in central Florida have to put up with, and preferably Orange County for the money, okay? Thank you for the preservation, like you said, of the academic programs and stuff. That's very good. Okay, now, I'm concerned about down where you're talking about the budgetary landscape. Help me with that, with the per pupil, the last one on there, the dress, of the $78 with the one mil. Okay, is that everybody? Because if it's not approved, I mean, I think we all feel good that it may be, because we're hearing good thing, but we're not hearing the others, because remember, there are tax groups out there that want this money, too, and I don't think they're going to get it. And that's bad, and so, I don't know, they may block us, but if it does not happen, what would happen to that $78 per pupil increase that we were looking at? Where do we go from here? So, that would be a thing for Dr. Jenkins, too. And then the last thing here, the budgetary, that's it. My time is up. I can get back with you on that.
You've got to go early, I know. You want to finish?
No, no.
Are you sure?
I can just get the answer, because I can catch Dale. I can just get the answer, because I can catch you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay.
Um, thank you. Salaries across the board, increased salaries across the board, any way, shape, form possible that we can, and if there's a way even to do, I know it gets complicated with benefits, but even one time to make the bridge. I did have a question. I didn't hear you talk about healthcare costs. So, where are we on that? Are we going to be flat, do you think?
Healthcare costs for this coming year will be flat. There is not an increase.
That's amazing. Congrats, congratulations on that. On the, on the officers for our schools, I was having a conversation with one of the municipalities last evening, and they said, it's not that we don't want, we can't, as you expressed, but I had a suggestion that we ask the state for the state troopers to cover this. So I think every district in the, in the state should ask for the state troopers to be put in where there are shortages in officers. But they're not going to accept our excuse of being able to fill these roles, and they're asking the local municipalities to not cover neighborhoods to go into our schools. So I think if they're willing to do that, and that's where they're committed, they should put some skin in the game with the state troopers. I am also for the sun shades, and if we cannot do all the sun shades at one time, and this is not an out, but as an option, that we in schools going forward plan the footers, because it's the going back and redoing the construction, as one of the parents pointed out, that is so expensive. So if we put the footer in, that is a negligible cost when they're pouring concrete. Healthcare, you already answered. On the mental health side, I know there's some restrictions on those dollars, and we're still trying to figure that out, but we started mental health first aid training this year. If we could spread that through the schools to all the teachers with our train, the trainers training them, that puts another tool in there, too, about not only the teachers, but any staff that, that deals with, with children. It's good for everybody, but especially then. And then something, I don't remember if I brought it to the table already, or if I just spoke to the superintendent about this, but, you know, there's a discussion about mental health and the opioid and drug crisis, and could we, as a board, add to the, and the pediatricians want to do this in our county and in the state, add to their assessment when kids go in for vaccines to do a mental health screening, which also includes if they've done drugs or alcohol. And it's a screening that they do in private with the child, so the child feels a little bit more free just to speak to them as a clinician to the patient. But that, I, I think legal is looking into if that's possible, but I wanted to bring that up. I don't know there'd be a cost to that, but it, while we're rolling out those components that have to do with the budget, it would be a great time to roll it out if we could get it in there. And then I also agree, if we can do anything through partnerships with public-private partnerships on CTE, job skills, and internship training, we can continue to add value for our community and certainly create a higher value and a higher competition rate for our students as they graduate. They would be much more competitive in this marketplace. And then I'm also in favor of the decorative fencing, as was discussed, and one last question. The money that Congresswoman Murphy has championed that's going to come through the state, but is directed to the district, does that give us any budgetary relief, or does it just pay us back for expenses we already had this year? So if you could answer that at some point.
Okay, on the federal dollars, we're still waiting on the Department of Education to give us the actual rules for the application for those funds. The initial, initial application came down for the actual closures during the hurricane, but the main dollars we were looking at that were on a per-student basis, 8,000, 9,000, 10,000 per student. We're waiting on Department of Education to provide us the details on that still.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gould. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to sort of go back again. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that salaries was number one priority. Into, for Ms. Colbert, the Lake Nona areas recently did an education sort of initiative panel. UCF, Valencia, Tavistock, OCPS participated in it, and there was discussion on doing exactly what you mentioned with your handout, is having the large, and they were talking regional, but you can expand that, and that's what I said, is we want this to ripple out, but having those kind of internships with the hospitals, with the, whatever else is out there, they're mostly medical, but that type. So that talk is very current right now, so thank you for bringing that up. In regard to sun shades, Ms. Gould, thank you for mentioning those footers. Of course, I'd love for us to look at that. I know there's restrictions now on construction spending, we have to share with charter, so our dollars start shrinking. I would just want to be sure that we know what's switched out. If we get sun shade and a decorative fence, what would, where would we cut back if we had to? So I want to make sure that's in the discussion. I didn't realize, and I guess the new schools get a pot of money, but I didn't realize that a flag, American flag and a flagpole wasn't standard, a purchase automatically or trash cans, you know, the principals have to put that in, order those themselves. So I would just want to make sure that we knew what the trade-offs are. And in regard to not having enough SROs from our local law enforcement, there was an article recently of a sheriff, it was either in Pasco or Pinellas, where he said to meet that mandate, he might have to pull sheriffs off the street into the schools, so, out of the neighborhoods. So, you know, that's a date, well, exactly, that's another dangerous element to this. So, yeah, let's bring in everybody who's got a badge and trained to, I guess, have a weapon. They've got some cool bikes that they can bring in, motorcycles that they can bring in, but, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson.
While I am hugely in favor of sun shades and decorative fencing, I am not in favor of that in any way impeding us from giving amazing salary increases to our teachers. If we're that desperate, I think it, well, but the sun shades, would those come from capital?
Either one.
It would come, it would come from capital.
It could come from either one, and either one is a legitimate source for it.
Okay. So I would not be in favor of it coming from capital, I mean, from operating, because that would mess up our salaries and the ability. So I don't want anything else, for me personally, I don't want anything else coming from operating but salary increases. That's, I want us to find every penny we can to give our teachers and our faculty and our staff, every single employee, a much deserved raise. And then, to the point that was just made, if it comes from capital, what's it, what's it taking the place of? So I, I think before I'm willing to say, yes, I'm, I'm good with it, I want to see what it, what it means for a project going forward. You know, what's it going to, where's it going to come from, and how's it going to potentially? So, I am in favor of having sun shades, don't get me wrong. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm giving up in order to get sun shades. So, for me, salaries is my only priority. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious, how could sun shades or decorative metal fencing ever come from operating? I don't understand how that's a proper use of operating dollars. And the only reason I ask it that way, I'm not trying to be contentious, but I think every member of this board, we understand that money comes down in silos, and we have our capital silo, and we have our operating silo, and the two never meet. So, you know, I just don't want it to be a situation where anybody's out there saying, hey, I champions teacher salaries over sun shades and decorative metal fencing, because I think seven of us at least were of the clear impression that those could only be paid out of capital.
The district does have the flexibility, if it so chose, you know, to use non-recurring dollars out of your operating budget for some one-time cost, including capital improvements, that is an option. But typically, the thing, they're paid from capital funds, they're a capital expenditure.
And just to be clear, because there are people who listen to this, we never use non-recurring funds for teacher salaries. At least, I don't believe we ever have. So I, I just don't want anybody listening to this thinking, okay, you know, you know, we were talking about using teacher salary money for sun shades or decorative metal fencing, that would be unfair to most of this board, who've all clearly understood that was capital only in that silo. By the way, Ms. Colbert, I love this idea. I hope you'll take it to the foundation. You know, I, I think it would be a great idea for the foundation, and I, you know, I will tell you, I guess it's being a high school parent, and I know I've got some educators up here, and some recent high school parents up here, you know, I never realized until recently how coveted internships were by students, and, you know, I think sadly, children from family like, like ours, to be candid, have access to all kinds of opportunities in that regard, but many children do not. So, it's a great idea. And so, and you know, and it's, kudos to Miami Dade for doing it, so.
You're a great leader.
Ms. Colbert.
Yeah, they, they even have great research and statistics that where they have, it's particularly targeted students who are disadvantaged, and because they have paid jobs during the summer, crime has gone down in those neighborhoods, and academics have gone up. They have all the research, it's really something I'm excited about. This is going to sound like it gets into the minutia, but I think that this would be sort of a net zero cost. A school came to my attention this week, this is a, a school in a disadvantaged area, where, when they have, like our middle schools get their new, new devices, their new laptops, and they have like a 2% contingency, so if there are 800 laptops, they have 16 that if, you know, they break to 2%. But the teacher brought to my attention that in this school, where there is so much financial need, students don't have laptop sleeves. And some of our wealthier schools, the PTA just does a fundraiser, and they just provide them to all the students, and they don't have the breakage. So if we could find it somewhere in the budget, when we're issuing these devices to issue laptop sleeves, I think probably the savings and the damage would offset the cost in those protective sleeves. Just another idea to throw out there as we're looking for every penny. Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson.
I just want to point out that I was not, my comments really were not in any way attempt to grandstand that I knew something, or I was better than anybody, because I only wanted salaries. I had asked specifically and was told that it could be taken out of security, safety and security, and I wanted to make sure that it wasn't taken out of that fund. Don't want anything taken out of operating. So I just was, was making sure that that was not an option, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Dr. Jenkins.
It's okay, I answered either. So, let me make sure everyone's clear on that, because I don't want it to be misunderstood. When you consider our operating dollars, our non-recurring dollars rest there. We have done a few things, such as our rubberized tracks out of the non-recurring dollars, but that is in your operating budget, it's not in your capital budget. The only time we've used dollars out of that same non-recurring pot are for one-time bonuses to staff. And so we, we will not do raises out of that non-recurring pot for salary increases, that would be foolish, and we'd be in terrible shape like some other districts are currently because of that. That, that pot of money runs dry pretty swiftly. When we do bonuses, it's out of that same operating, non-recurring pot. And so I wanted to remind the board, the rubberized tracks did come out of operation, but it was out of that non-recurring pot of money. And then I think, too, it's, it's important to note, for anyone who might be listening, while, while the board is very supportive of it, we have yet to discuss the additional safety measures from our consultants, and I know this board will probably prioritize that before the additional 4.5 million dollars, but that will come to us shortly in an executive session. They are still working on those recommendations. So I, I, I hope I can make an assumption that our commitment cannot be before we know what additional resources we may need to invest in safety. And then thirdly, regarding sun shades, I want to remind anyone who might be listening, it's usually, when John's folks looked at it, it's one sun shade per school, and so that usually covers the tot lot or one play area. And so I don't want any parent to think that their children are guaranteed to always be outside undercover, because with recess and PE, there will still not be enough covered play space for our children. But keep in mind, the legislature did make it legal for children to bring sunscreen. Remember, it had to be dispensed at one time from the clinic, and now it's okay for everybody to bring their own sunscreen. So I want parents to understand, even if they get a sun shade, it is not going to cover everyone who's outside at once, because we have PE and recess going on outside at the same time. Bring your sunscreen, because it is now, according to Ms. Fernandez, legal for children to have their sunscreen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Then I stand corrected, Mrs. Robinson, so thank you. And if that's the case, I, I just want to be clear, and I'll let other board members speak, that I would want, not want decorative metal fencing or sun shades paid for anything outside of capital dollars. And frankly, if the choice were bonuses or, well, you know, that's where I think our non-recurring operating dollars should, should, should go. You know, frankly, and I hate to sit up here, because I, I try not to do it, I think it's, it's just my style, I, I think it's better throughout what we want, let the experts decide where it's going to come from. But, you know, if our, being a budget wonk and looking at the budget, I'd probably be suggesting we, we need to look at our curb-side appeal budget for, for the decorative metal fencing, and, and, or for our capital renewal dollars. But take that with a grain of salt. If John were to tell me tomorrow, Mr. Morris or Ms. Roth were to tell me tomorrow, that's a terrible idea, but this is a better pot of money, you know, we just shrug and go wherever, so long as it comes out of capital. Why did we though, by the way? I'm just curious, I don't mean to start a snowball effect here, but why did we pay for the rubberized tracks out of non-recurring operating rather than out of capital dollars?
I'm sorry, it was unbudgeted, actually. Our capital dollars are all accounted for without the rubberized tracks, as they are accounted for currently without the decorative fencing. We can look at, as Ms. Cadel, I'm sorry, as Ms. Flynn recommended, we can look at where we might trim if we wanted to make that standard. But your capital budget already has provisions for the dollars that are available. We'll look at making some adjustments. We also have a possibility of our safety dollars. There'll have to be some decision made whether or not sun shades can fit under safety. We think some of the additional costs that are, that might be recommended around safety issues, we can take specifically out of safety reserves, but we'll get back to you on that matter in executive session.
All right. Mrs. Gordon.
And Ms. Robinson already did hers. Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Okay, mine is very quick, it's to piggyback on yours. Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Chairman, this is directed to the superintendent. And when the chairman brought up the, I like the idea of the ornamental fencing with Mr. Mars and Ms. Lauren, I mean, even if it's the ornamental flowers, you know, the look decorative, beautiful decorative, oh, the curb appeal, my Lord, thank you. Okay, because, you know, that, that's a great idea, because we were just looking at where we were the other day, when we dedicated the plants and trees and cut the ribbon on them and everything, it could use a little ornamental something, you know, so that's a good idea. But, and they are looking to help us and ask. I wanted to make a comment on yours that you mentioned about the, I just wrote it down. Oh, the rubberized tracks. We're not, we're not doing them all at the same time. We already, we have already budgeted for some of them, so that will not be affecting anything. You know, that little money is gone for that, and now we're looking at a little bit more, and then once we, hurry up before we build all these high schools. And now we're going to do a little bit at a time, and I think every board member, they, you all voted, you voted, and you led that for us, to understand that. So that will get done, so that would not be a big bite out of the budget, but it'll be just enough to keep us going. But then we said, if there is a necessity where the weather comes in, and, you know, another tornado, hurricane, or whatever, we would look at that because of the safety of the children. So we want to keep that in mind, that we will go and report. So we want to keep that in mind, that we will go and repair, but we will have money for that catastrophe fund, that we will be able to replace what needs to be done. If they tow up the old track, we probably, and Mr. Morris could probably address that later, Dr. Jenkins, we will be able to get, you know, that replaced also. Thank you.
All right, great presentation, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Jenkins, thank you. Glad we did this, actually. All right, next subject.
Ready for the next topic, as they are switching places. And as my facilities folks are preparing to leave, members of the board, just one little stipulation on capital renewal dollars, so those have to be for major systems. It's actually clarified in our COV agreements, that capital renewal dollars are very limited. New roof, new AC system, HVAC, et cetera, I don't know that we could stretch that definition to include the fencing nor the sun shades, but I wanted to at least acknowledge that we heard that and we'll look into it.
Does the painting come under capital renewal too? Does the painting, when Glenn Ridge was 10 years old, we went back in and repainted it, is that part of the capital renewal?
It can be, if there's a capital renewal project for the school, it is incorporated in that. Other than that, there's a painting program that exists, as we go through the district.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, board members, we are here today to give you your annual legislative update from the 2016 legislative session.
So, Mr. Howard, let me just interrupt you one second, I'm sorry, just because she asked me to mention, Ms. Covert has her daughter's concert tonight, she has to cut out, and Mrs. Gordon has her school family book there. And who's that sitting next to you?
It's Eileen Fernandez.
Oh, I didn't recognize her.
That often happens when you go to Tallahassee for nine weeks. So let me turn it over to Eileen, Cody could not be here, he's actually traveling today, and certainly, but the two of them did outstanding work during the legislative session in the face of great obstacles and great odds, so let me turn it over to Ms. Fernandez to take over and lead you through the update.
Good evening. I wanted to, first of all, let you guys know, the presentation, the PowerPoint that we did this year is very detailed. I am not going to go through all of the detail on it, but we wanted you to have a reference guide, in case you wanted to use this for later on, it's got some very good information, detailed information for you. So we're going to start with the first bill, which is Senate Bill 7026, it's regarding public safety. The bill creates new restrictions on who can purchase a firearm and age restrictions as well. It also expands the powers of law enforcement when they Baker Act a person, now they are able to take firearms away under certain situations. The bill creates the Office of Safe Schools within the DOE to work with schools on school safety issues. It requires districts to have active shooter drills conducted by law enforcement agencies at schools, and to have policies that require these drills. And it also requires each district to conduct a safety assessment of each of their schools using the standards that will be established by the Office of Safe Schools in the DOE. The bill also requires boards to, boards must allow law enforcement agencies to tour the schools every three years, and the law enforcement agencies must document recommended changes to the districts. Every district must appoint a school district safety specialist and have a threat assessment team at every school. The most talked about provision of the bill is the creation of the Aaron Fies Guardian Program. The Guardian Program has to be established at the discretion, at the option of the sheriff, and it is up to the district to participate, it is not mandatory for the district to participate if the sheriff establishes the program. The bill also changes the SRO and the school safety officer requirements, so now they have to have a background check, drug testing, and psychological evaluations before they can be permitted onto the campuses. And of course, the bill also creates the new mental health allocation as a supplemental funding source. Move on to 7055, which is the big omnibus education bill. Again, the most popular or the most talked about provision in the bill is the creation of the Hope Scholarship for students who allege that they have been subjected to various offenses, including bullying. In addition to the voucher that they would receive for educational services, these students would also be eligible to receive a transportation voucher of $750. The bill requires the DOE to evaluate the program, and it will review the performance of students enrolled in private schools that have at least 51% of the program participants making up their student population. And it, this year, they've also included some accountability requirements for organizations that distribute the vouchers, as well as schools that accept them. The bill also creates a second scholarship program, which is the Reading Scholarship Program. This is for students in grades three through five who score below a three on their third or fourth grade ELA. The districts have to notify parents by September 30th of every year if the student scored below a three on the ELA, so that they can then participate in the program. The bill this year has changed the voucher program a little bit, in that now it allows taxes from commercial rental properties to be redirected to fund the voucher programs. This is new. The bill also requires that any district that has a school in the 300 lowest performing elementary schools to use that school's SAA allocation to provide an extra hour of intensive reading instruction. And this reading instruction does not have to be in addition to the regular school day, it can be incorporated into the school day. The bill has several provisions that deal with charter schools. It allows charter schools and management companies to establish Level 1 and Level 2 leader preparation programs or program renewals. It allows charter schools to defer opening up for three years instead of two, and the charter schools may now also choose when they will open. And if you have a situation where a developer wants to open up a charter school to count towards their mitigation, the value of the facility they build has to be at a $5 million value instead of a $10 million value, which was what the standard was previously. They have expanded the eligibility for charters to become high-performing charters by allowing charters earning two consecutive As to be eligible as high-performing charters. And they, it increases the standards that districts must meet in order to non-renew or terminate a charter. The new legal standard is clear and convincing evidence, and it was previously preponderance of the evidence, and also the violation has to be a material violation. In addition to changing those things, they have now removed the option for school boards to hold a direct hearing in a non-renewal or termination of a charter. Just so you know, we already skipped this process, so we have elected to skip this process already. It also now allows the prevailing party to be awarded attorney's, attorney costs and fees. And there's a new provision in there that requires districts to reimburse charters for background screenings, if the results of those background screenings aren't received by the charter on the earlier of 14 days after receipt of the fingerprints, I'm sorry, of the results, or 30 days after submission of the fingerprints. And that is regardless of whether that delay is caused by the school district or an outside It also allows districts to waive out of SREF requirements, it would require a supermajority vote by the board, and it would also require that there is sufficient emergency shelters in the county for our population. The bill increases the amount that the districts can hold back from Title I funds to provide certain district-wide services from 8% to 10%. This is a, if you will, a fix to what was created under 7069 last year and the restrictions they placed on our Title I funding last year. The bill also contains the teacher union decertification language, and it also contains a provision requiring the board to adopt a rule that requires the state motto be displaced in all buildings that are used by the district. Districts may now use locally generated funds to complete facilities without an education plan survey recommendation. And also, the bill expands the eligibility of teachers that qualify to receive the best and brightest scholarship. Moving on to House Bill 495, this bill has some changes regarding drop, it basically has some changes to the drop extensions for certain employees. It contains various changes to computer science courses, and requires that we ensure that computer science is integrated in courses in middle and high school. It creates a bonus program for computer science teachers, and these bonus programs, these bonuses are in addition to any other bonus programs that the teachers would qualify for, so they would be in addition, for example, to best and brightest. This may come as a shock, but the bill criminalizes acts where a teacher has an inappropriate sexual relationship with a student. But what has changed is now that this is regardless of whether the student is a minor, and also regardless of whether it's a consensual relationship. It also requires the board to adopt a policy requiring an employee's duty to report inappropriate sexual relationships between staff or employees and students, and to also adopt a policy requiring the superintendent to report these instances to law enforcement. It also has a provision that states if a board member knowingly fails to adopt these policies, the board member will forfeit their salaries for a year. If the superintendent fails to report the offense to law enforcement, the superintendent would also forfeit their salary for a year. So if they fail to follow the policy that requires them to report those indiscretions to law enforcement. The bill requires a notation on an employee's file if an employee resigns or is terminated before an investigation of misconduct is concluded. In addition, it has new reporting requirements for charter schools and private schools that accept vouchers. And it also provides that students who earn a minimum score for college credit on APIB or AICE courses, they don't have to take the state EOC for that subject. I do believe that this is a practice we already incorporate in our district. We now have House Bill 1279. Most of the provisions under 1279 do not take effect until July 1, 2019. There are a few other requirements in here, however, that do take effect this year, July 1 of this year, and I'll go over those in just a few minutes. It contains new auditing requirements for the board. The auditor general must contact school boards with previous audit findings, and boards must show evidence of corrective action within 45 days, and show that corrective action is completed within 180 days. Failure to meet those deadlines will result in requiring the auditor general to contact the legislative auditing committee. The DOE's inspector general now has to investigate certain allegations made by certain individuals against school boards. And it also requires that districts that receive $500 million or more in taxpayer funds to hire an internal auditor, which, of course, we already have. The bill has additional reporting requirements for districts regarding operating costs and classroom expenditures. This data has to be reported to the DOE, and the DOE will then take this data to develop a web-based tool and compare how funds are used by each district in the state. The bill contains some requirement to reduce administrative costs by school districts if certain financial issues exist. And in addition to that, if the district fails to timely pay certain debts and liabilities, the school board member and the superintendent's salary must be withheld until that is fixed. So the provisions, I have put a little asterisk next to the two that actually will take effect this year, so you'll see those on the slide. It also has a provision stating that school board member salaries cannot be any higher than the salaries for a beginning teacher. And there are new school board approvals required when school members travel out of the district and out of the state, and those approvals have to be, have to be done prior to the travel. These were the main bills, we also had a couple other substantive bills that I'm going to go over even quicker than the ones that I just went over. The first one we'll start off with is House Bill 29, which relates to military and veteran affairs. It has various new provisions that aid military members and their families on various education issues. Some are very, very good provisions in there, for example, we now have a provision in there that would allow military personnel to use some of their military experience as officers in order to be able to be certified as a principal. House Bill 411 clarifies the exemption for safety plans. House Bill 577 provides more flexibility on receiving credit for certain graduation House Bill 731 has restrictions on information districts can collect from home education students, and expands home education students' ability to participate in career and technical House Bill 1091 has new accountability measures for providers of early learning services. House Bill 1201 deals with funding of educational services for prisoners. Senate Bill 1940 creates additional safety exemptions from public records law. And Senate Bill 7024 also contains additional exemptions from public records law. And that's it.
Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you, I have a few questions. Can you elaborate a little bit on the SREF portion of the?
Sure. Yeah. So basically, any SREF requirement, you're able to waive out of that requirement, you would have to do a resolution, it has to be approved by the supermajority, by a supermajority vote. And as long as there are sufficient hurricane shelters in the county, you'd be fine with having that waiver go through.
So that's, that's interesting, because, you know, we've been always saying to them, compare us apples to apples, oranges to oranges, don't compare apples to oranges, and this is actually giving us the ability, with a supermajority vote, to be able to open a school that we need to open for overcrowding purposes, somewhere that's not meeting all those standards. I, I'm, Scott, you look like you want to say something, yes?
No, you're right, I was just going to add that that also includes the Castaldi waiver too, so you, that you could bring that forward under, under that waiver provision as well.
Good, that's awesome. Yes, Dr. Jenkins?
Chairman. So I would add to that as well, the notion of giving us like standards, when we have pretty high standards for our facilities, we'll put the board in an unusual situation should you decide to zone children to an actual school that is of a different standard. But there's no reason why you couldn't open up a magnet program where folks voluntarily go to a facility that might be not at the same standard that we've had previously. I think where it gets sticky is if you actually zone children and said you will go to the school that's less than the standard of what we provide for our other children. But I think the possibilities are there. What we're most excited about, Ms. Robinson, is the Castaldi authority, because we have to beg and plead when it's cheaper for Mr. Morris and his team to tear down an entire campus instead of working around a single building that they ask us to preserve, it's cheaper to just be able to demolish, and we won't have to, at least it's our interpretation, we won't have to ask that permission anymore. So we're excited about that. I think the possibility of creating magnets similar to charter I think the possibility of creating magnets similar to charters that are in non-traditional settings is wide open for school systems.
I think that's awesome.
Rather than the zoning, which would be a little uncomfortable.
Thank you for pointing that out. I'm really, I'm thrilled that we just have an option, that we finally have an option. Because, I mean, that's what we've been asking for. You know, we're not opposed to charter schools. We actually partner really well with our charter schools here in Orange County. But what we've been asking is, "Compare us apples to apples, compare us to oranges." And they still aren't. But hey, we'll take what they give us, right? And then the teachers' union, switching to another topic, the teachers' union, what is, and who knows the answers, what is our current union percentage participation, do we know?
For the last time we checked, we were close to 49%.
So when do they have to get to 50% by?
We believe it's the next time they're up for reauthorization. PERC would be sending out those particular details, I think it's in April of next year.
Of next year.
At least, that's what Ms. Dormel has mentioned to me. We can double-check that for you.
And then, it says that they have to reapply, but does that, say they don't reach the 50%, they're still at 40%. Could we still choose to bargain with them? So we can't even make that an option? We can't choose to do that if they don't reach the threshold? Okay, just thought I'd ask. And then the portion on there about school board member salaries. So basically, I mean, the state has determined our salaries based on student enrollment for many years. So are we going to be getting our salaries rolled back to what the current... Okay. And when will that take place?
It will take place on the effective date of the bill, so which is...
This July?
July 1 of this year.
Okay.
And it actually, yeah, it has that in the bill.
I think that's awesome. I mean, we've been doing what the state gave us, so I have no problem with that. I think that's... Right, right. I'm just saying, we're going to go less. Our salaries are going to go back to what our beginning teachers are. And I have no problem with that, because we've just been getting paid what the state's been giving us, so I'm good with that. Okay. Well, thank you. I probably have more, but I'm going to let somebody else go. Thank you.
On page 13, it talks about the Department of Revenue to disclose 200 taxpayers with the greatest corporate income tax liability reported during the previous calendar year.
Right.
Have you heard anything from the business community on this?
No.
Are they aware?
Honestly, it was very much overlooked during the testimony.
I think that I would like to share, and I would ask us to share that with our chambers and businesses, because, could you explain, I mean, you're basically, they're getting prospected for these non-for-profits without them volunteering to be prospects, is what's happening.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's interesting, because that's in complete conflict with ethics rules with Association of Fundraising Professionals, but that's besides the point.
13?
Yeah, Slide 13. How many of those eligible non-for-profits are there, do you know?
I don't.
And they'd all get the same names?
That's right.
Uh-huh.
Yes, because the bill contains some additional language in there that allows tax credits, for instance, to be carried forward.
Right.
And so if you have a tax liability, obviously, you could redirect some of those funds to the voucher program.
To the voucher program. But now you're going to be asked to by lots of different organizations.
Right.
Oh, their junk mailbox is going up. I wrote down stipend. Why did I write down stipend? Darn it. I don't remember.
Here it is.
So with the change in the capital rule with the Castaldi change and not having to be a hurricane shelter, does that mean that we might be more, be able to qualify and partner for redevelopment dollars, say, of old shopping centers and things like that, that we could then apply to put CTE programs or magnet programs or something of the such in there? Does that give us more flexibility with that kind of partnership?
I would think so.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Yay, one good one.
Yes, Ms. Fernandez?
Ms. Robinson, I just wanted to make a quick correction. Your salary reductions actually go into effect on 2019, July 1, 2019.
Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. In regard to the HOPE Scholarship, I know this was a discussion that I'm going to bring up that we had with one of the representatives, and I'm sorry that I didn't see it in here, but our question to that representative was, how will capacity, or can we have capacity as a qualifier when we're looking at which schools they want to transfer to? And the response was, well, it will follow the open enrollment capacity. And at that time, I don't think it did. So I wanted to see if there was anything that gave the districts an opportunity to put qualifiers on which schools were open to receiving transfers, as we did with open enrollment. And my second thing was, is this one still based on the car tax? The car tax?
It is, yes.
Okay. So that was my first thing, if there was capacity. And then in regard to the Title I issue, does it fix the issue? It was in response to last year's bill, but does it fix the issue that we were concerned about, the portability?
On the Title I issue, it doesn't provide you a complete fix. What it does is it just increases the threshold from 8 to 10%.
Okay. Which is...
For district-wide services.
Okay.
So previously, we had no restrictions from the state on what we could use for district-wide services. 7069 changed that so that we could only hold back 8%. This changes it so that the threshold is now 10% instead of 8%.
That gives the district the flexibility on how to use that?
On the services, and it still outlines which services we are able to use those funds for, but it did increase that threshold.
Okay. And then in regard to the capacity?
The bill itself doesn't have any restrictions on us being able to do what you're saying. And so I would interpret that to mean that if there's nothing in there that prohibits us from doing that, that we could certainly follow the same rules that we follow for controlled open enrollment.
Okay, so, okay, that's great.
The other point I was going to make is, there's nothing in there that says that the person accepting the voucher can choose what school they would be able to go to, other than a private school. In other words, they can go to another public school. So that would give us the flexibility, too. It doesn't say they get to pick where they go.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be within our parameters or you all's parameters to decide that, like we did with open enrollment.
Okay. That's positive news. And, Mr. Chairman, for the superintendent, I think it would be interesting to see how the Title I funding for the district, how that is going to impact OCPS and what we do now. I would find that of interest, because even though it's a bump up to 10%, I mean, that's certainly a change from how we're using those dollars now to help the schools that really need that, have the higher population. Okay, thank you.
We'll get that in... Thank you, Chairman. We'll get that in the board update for you.
I had a whole bunch of questions, so bear with me. Board members are hoping for you to death. Going back to Slide 7, second bullet, what exactly is a safe school officer? I mean, is that our SRO, or does every school, including our elementarys, now have to have a designated individual?
Safety school officer is defined under statute, and it would be basically somebody within our own safety department that would be able to carry a weapon onto campus and basically serve a similar function as a law enforcement officer, but not fully, if that makes any sense.
So they don't have to be on that campus full-time? They just have to be designated to that campus?
The language in this statute actually, I mean, in the bill actually says that you have to have a SRO or a school safety specialist assigned to each school. That's the specific language in the bill.
Assigned, but, well, let me ask. Here's why I'm asking. So we have one SRO for every three elementary schools. Does that qualify? Does that meet that requirement of a safe school officer for each of those three schools? Or do we now have to have somebody with a weapon on campus at each school every day?
I think I'm going to let Mr. Rodriguez answer that.
So, Chairman, it's interesting, because there are differing interpretations. Most districts are interpreting it to mean, as long as someone is assigned to every school, it does not mean one full-time equivalent for every school. But we full well know that the impression of the general public is that the requirement is one actual body on every campus. That is not what the language actually says, but that's what's been implied.
Okay. I love it when I ask a question, I think it's stupid. I find out it's not that stupid.
That's a very good question.
I had not heard that until just now. It's the first I've heard of that requirement. I haven't read that anywhere in the media. This may have been asked, because I was furiously trying to read. We went through this so quickly, and I think another board member may have asked this, but the Page 9 of the presentation, the voucher for a student to attend a private school, I presume that's under the, what's been referred to in the media as the bullying provision. How much is that voucher? Do we know yet?
No.
So it's another private voucher program where they can take that voucher? I mean, I knew that they could transfer to another public school.
Right.
Again, I wasn't aware until just now, today, they can take a voucher and go to a private school with that voucher amount?
That's correct.
Has not been determined yet?
No.
Is it equal to the FTE? I think it's equivalent.
A certain percentage.
Not getting widely reported. And plus the transportation voucher on top of it.
Right.
Okay. Have I missed that in the media reports? I mean, that's a giant expansion potentially of the voucher program.
Right.
I don't remember reading a single article about it. I mean, I've read a ton about the bullying and taking your kid to a different school based on the mere allegation of bullying, but I didn't realize you were eligible for a private voucher to a private school.
I think you can actually do it on a new car and also if you're transferring title, if I remember correctly. And then also, of course, don't forget, there's the new tax contribution now with the commercial rental property. So that would go into that as well. Now that would go into... The other thing I did want to point out, if you'll excuse me, is you talked about the bullying, and there are other incidents that a student may allege, and they do not have to be substantiated.
Yeah. That's why I'm a little bit stunned. Under the recertification program, on Page 18 of the, what's the current status of our local union? And when does that 50% threshold, when is it measured by? Has that deadline passed? Is it coming up?
Well, we think we'll get some direction from PERC. There hasn't been any direction. The bill goes into effect as of July 1. I don't, or no, it went into effect as of March. That was in the March...
That was 7055, July 1.
Right. So we were just saying, we think it goes into effect for each union as they come up for recertification. And I think Dr. Jenkins had stated April of next year. I think we are already certified through. When I was involved in labor, the certification cycle was in April when they recertified. So I'm assuming that that would be the...
All right. Do we anticipate that our unions are going to have to petition for recertification? Do we know?
Well, we're below the 50% threshold right now. We're about 49%.
Is that pro forma, or is it difficult to obtain? Is it just routine, happens all the time? They'll get recertified? We can pretty much be assured of that, or not necessarily?
If they're below 50%, they're going to have to, they'll be decertified, and then they'll have to go back out for recertification, which means they'll have to get signatures and go back out to a vote to recertify.
Okay. So it's not simply a matter of petitioning? You have to actually go through a process and try to obtain...
And PERC outlines those.
50% of your eligible employees to sign?
I think in order to certify, I think it's 30%, but then, of course, the membership level to recertify after that has to be 50. So you have to build back up. But PERC sets those rules, so they'll give guidance as to how to do it. They'll probably also end up pulling that data.
So if a union is decertified and it's in the midst of the end of a contract, do we then just unilaterally impose a contract without any bargaining? Because we have nobody to bargain with if we don't have a certified unit, correct?
Right. They wouldn't have any authority to bargain under the contract. I mean, certainly, there wouldn't be any obligation there.
Well, would there...
I mean, you have state colleges now.
Even the ability there?
You have state colleges now that aren't unionized, that, you know, come up with labor wage proposals and push them forward with the board without a bargaining unit. And you have others that do have bargaining units, so it would be similar to that.
So we could, all right, so we could still entertain proposals, but it wouldn't be a bargaining situation? Okay, interesting.
Chairman, if I may, I hate to use the term unilateral, but in the absence of a negotiating partner, then the board would have to make those decisions and move forward with them. Also, I wanted to note, Ms. Dormel does believe that they are currently in excess of the 50%. The calculation is by payroll deductions. If there are folks who have given cash information without going through payroll, PERC will look at our payroll record. And so you may hear folks saying, "We are above 50%. The last time we checked on our payroll record, we would not be able to substantiate that to PERC." And so we've encouraged them, if they're holding any applications or if they've taken any cash contributions, that they need to be taken through the formal payroll process.
All right. Page 24, do we already have a policy? That top bullet point on Page 24, or are we, this might be some from Mr. Rodriguez, are we formulating a policy to meet that requirement? That's one of the reporting, we have to adopt a policy regarding the reporting of disqualifying offenses?
Don't forget that this is dealing with the fact that the age of the student no longer matters and whether it was consensual no longer matters.
No, I know that, but it sounds like it requires a new school board policy.
It does, yeah. For 495, no, that would be by, it takes effect July 1, 2018, but we could put it in the rotation for the first part of the year.
Okay. Almost done. Just curious, Page 29, and you don't need to say who, I suspect, I know, is that directed at a specific district or districts, from your recollection? I mean, that doesn't even come close to meeting us, right, where we've always been?
It does. It was specifically for...
Certain South Florida district? Okay. Enough said. And last question. So Page 35, what does that, sort of open-ended question, but what does that exactly mean? Does that mean any member of the armed services who's honorably discharged or their surviving spouse can get a teacher's certification without passing the general knowledge, professional education, subject area examination portion?
It means that certain experience that...
Where you just waive the fees?
You waive the fees, but there's also another provision that would allow a person that's in the military to use their military service time if they are an officer, in lieu of, for instance, a degree, to obtain a principal certification, to be a principal.
I read that up above on the leadership portion. That's actually commissioned or non-commissioned officers.
That's correct.
Okay.
And this is fees.
All right. Lots of little hidden gems I wasn't aware of. I'm glad we did this. All right, anybody else? All right. Well, we're ending with a thud. We are adjourned.
Great work on my end.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all.